Good morning, everybody. Wouldn't it be really annoying if I did one of those things where I was like, "Good morning, everybody." Hi, everybody. I'm Ryan Dorsey. I'm the Chair of the Land Use and Transportation Committee. This is a couple -- we're going to do a voting session here this morning on Thursday, September 25th, 2025. We're going to begin with a voting session, and then we're going to go on to hearing for a number of bills. We have three bills in our voting session, which I will call first after I just acknowledge my colleagues here. To my left, we have Vice Chair of the Committee and Vice President of the City Council, Sharon Green Middleton from the 6th Council District.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
To her left, we have Councilman Zach Blanchard from the 11th District. To my far right, we have Councilman Mark Parker from the 1st District, Councilman Paris Gray from the 8th District, Councilwoman Felicia Porter from the 10th District, and our committee staff. Julianne Jamot, how are you doing today? Good. We also have Tony Leva back there. Hey, Tony. We have staff with us from the Council President's Office and other council members' offices. We have staff here from various city agencies who, just as you are called on, I will just ask you to begin by stating your name and who you represent. We will begin with a voting session here on Council Bill 250062, Building Code, Single Exit From Residential Occupancy. This bill was heard one week ago on September 18th. I distributed amendments from the Fire Department to committee members. I asked if there were any questions from members in the email. I didn't get anybody any back, but if there are -- but I will explain these amendments quickly and then ask again if there are any questions on this before asking for a vote on it. In your packet, you have an eight-page-long amendment. Where is DLR? Is DLR here? I just want to say thanks to DLR for getting this together. It's an eight-page-long amendment, and here's why it's eight pages long. We belatedly were informed that all of the changes that this bill makes in the building code have to also be identically transferred into the fire code. And so, we have one amendment, Amendment 4, that is as long as the rest of the entire bill and has -- and essentially takes the form of the rest of the bill with all of the other amendments incorporated into it. Does that make sense to committee members? So, we have Amendment Number 1, which is just technical. It's just amending the title section of the bill. Amendment 2 makes a change to the height of -- or the number of stories, rather, of group R2 occupancy, so long-term residential occupancy, in specifically the building type Type 3A, pulling that out of what was grouped with Types 1, 2, and 4 as well, setting a distinct standard, making clear interpretation about how 3A is handled in keeping with actually existing standards in the Building and Fire Code. Amendment 3 is our heightened standards for sprinklerization of buildings above and beyond what the existing building code requires generally for buildings, but my understanding is that these standards are actually in keeping with what the International Code Council is proposing and is being prepared to be adopted in the next iteration of the Building and Fire Codes. So, we're just kind of getting ahead of what will become law anyway and applying that to be, again, very safe with what we're approving here. It is also increasing the fire protection rating for certain things from one hour to one hour, one and a half-hour fire rating, and in other cases, like the corridor that connects the unit entrances out to the staircase, making sure that it's clear that that's a two-hour fire-rated corridor. And so, then Amendment 4, as I said at the beginning here, is basically the whole bill with these things incorporated into it and put into the fire code. Does this all make sense? Are there any questions for me about that? Then, with that, I will move the amendments favorable on behalf of the Fire Department. Since I'm the Chair and I'm moving this, I will ask if there is a second. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor of adopting the amendments from the Fire Department, say aye. Aye. All opposed, say nay. Abstain? Great. The amendments are adopted, and I will move the bill favorable as -- with amendment. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. We will do a roll call. Julianne?
Dorsey?
Yes.
Middleton?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Porter?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
That is six in the affirmative, one absent, and this bill will move on to second reader on Monday. Thank you, colleagues. I appreciate it. Moving on to Bills 78, 250078, City Streets Closing, Portions Of Certain Streets And Alleyes Bounded By Riggs Avenue, North Payson Street, And The Land Of National Railroad Passenger Company, Amtrak. This for a city street closing. We wanted to wait for a Planning Commission report before taking a vote on it. We have received the Planning Commission's favorable report on this bill, and I move the bill favorable. Is there a second?
Second.
We'll do a roll call. Julianne?
Dorsey?
Yes.
Middleton?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Porter?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
The bill is voted favorable and will be reported on second reader on Monday. Council Bill 250079, Sale Of Property, Certain Streets Lying Within The Area Bounded By Riggs Avenue, North Payson Street, West Lafayette Avenue, And The Land Of National Railroad Passenger Corporation, Amtrak. This is a bill where we are approving for the sale of the property that, with the bill we just voted, we voted to close off, essentially condemning that portion of city public right-of-way. Obviously, we couldn't sell it unless we were going to close it off. So, we've closed -- we've voted to recommend that it be closed, and now we'll take a vote to approve the sale of the property. I move the bill favorable. Is there a second?
Second.
Julianne, we'll take a roll call vote.
Dorsey?
Yes.
Middleton?
Yes.
Porter?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
I mean, Blanchard, excuse me.
Yes.
Great. The bill is voted favorable and will be recommended favorable to the City Council on Monday at our next City Council meeting. That concludes the voting session portion of today's committee business. We will hear a set of bills, and we will vote them as we go, one at a time. I want to -- we will begin with Councilman Blanchard's bills. What I'm going to do is, we're going to go through the bills in order of sponsor so that they can each be presented by the sponsor subsequently, and then move on to the next sponsor's set of bills. So, the first bill we will call Councilman Blanchard and his applicants or proponents up for is Bill 250077. Zoning, Conditional Use, Conversion Of A Single Family Dwelling In The R8 Zoning District, Variances 5, 4, 1 Lafayette Avenue. We'll let the sponsor present the bill, and then I'll call for public testimony afterwards. Thank you. Councilman Blanchard?
That's the applicant.
Yeah. We'll call him after.
Okay.
Councilman Blanchard, take it away.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chair, committee members. So, this is a conditional use conversion from one unit to two on the 500 block of West Lafayette, right off Pennsylvania Avenue in Upton. It's on the north side of Robert C. Marshall Rec. Center in Field. It is a block where there are six standing row homes on that block face. All of them are vacants. So, this is Mr. Brown, who this is his first property in the city. He's done several rehabs in Prince George's County. So, he is proposing to convert it from one unit to two. We have a letter of support from the Community Association, the Upton Planning Committee. I think this is a great project, and it's a great opportunity to continue the revitalization of the Upton neighborhood.
Great. An Upton neighborhood. Love it. Okay, thanks. We will hear -- you won't have a seat until the next bill report -- or bill we pull up. Let's go. Are there any questions for the sponsor? Sorry. Great. Let's go on to agency reports. Law Department?
Good morning. Desiree Lucky on behalf of the Law Department. The Law Department approves this bill for legal form insufficiency.
Great, thank you. Planning Commission?
Good morning, Mr. Chair. Members of the Committee, Eric Tiso from the Department of Planning here for the Planning Commission. The Commission reviewed this in their hearing of August 11th and recommended favorable, also noting that the included variance for the parking variance is no longer required as a result of the change to the base zoning code requirement, so that can be omitted.
Great. So, there is no -- and do we have an amendment drafted?
I believe between DLR and Law, they determined it wasn't necessary just by operation of the code.
Okay.
Willing to be corrected on that, but that's the word I've been given.
Great. Law, can you just confirm that, please?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, great. Thank you. Department of Housing and Community Development?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Jason Wright, representing DHCD. We stand behind our favorable bill report.
Great. Any questions to the committee for -- good morning, Councilman Bullock. How are you doing? Are there any questions from the committee for any of the agencies? Okay, great. Then, we will go on to public testimony. Brandon Brown, is this our applicant? Great. How you doing this morning?
How you doing, sir?
I'm great. Tell us your name on the record.
My name is Brandon Brown.
Great. And what do you want to tell us about this property?
I bought this property maybe a year ago in hopes to make it a two-unit dwelling so I can rent the top out and live in the bottom because I love Baltimore City, and I want to be a part of it. So, I want to have a place that I can stay instead of renting hotels, so I decided to make this into a multi-unit so I can have a place to stay when I come out here.
Love it.
Right. Thank you.
Love it. You're living in Baltimore City, you're not living in a place that's bigger than what you need, and you're creating housing for other people.
Yes, sir.
Love it.
Yes, sir.
Cool. So, you want us to vote favorable on the bill?
Please.
All right, cool. Any questions from the committee for the applicant? All right, great. Anybody else here on this bill?
All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Great. Is there a motion favorable on the bill?
So moved.
Great. We'll take a roll call.
Dorsey?
Yes.
Middleton?
Yes.
Porter?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Bullock?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Thank you. This bill is voted favorable and will be recommended as such to the full City Council on the next Council meeting this coming Monday.
Mr. Chair, a brief point of privilege on this.
Sure.
I'll just take the time to point out that this whole process is going to take Mr. Brown about nine months longer to go through and successfully rehab a lighted property and turn it into homes than it would if the Mayor's Bill 250066 is able to pass. And so, that when it comes to tackling the vacant housing crisis, this is a very clear example of how the current requirements make it much harder to do so.
Love it. Thank you. Love it and hate it, right? Yeah. Thank you. All right, we are on Bill Number 250082, Planned Unit Development Amendment, Under Armour Headquarters. Councilman Blanchard, this is also your bill. Take it away, my friend.
Awesome. Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, long story short, the Under Armour -- Under Armour's old headquarters down in Locust Point are within a planned unit development. It was recently sold -- a portion of it was sold to Mark Saperstein, the prominent developer in the area, who then decided to sell it to Cristo Rey High School, which is a --
It's weird. We can hear it in here, but it did -- something about the character of the sound did change. Oh.
Okay. Yeah, here we go.
Totally. Thank you.
All right, so I'll just restate it. He purchased a portion earlier this year, which he is now planning to sell to Cristo Rey High -- Cristo Rey High School. Cristo Rey wants to move from the Patterson Park, just west of Patterson Park, to this location. The main thing that needs to happen via PUD amendment is to allow a high school as a use, land use, for the location. This is something that, after some deliberation with the community, the Civic Association voted 36 to 22 in support of. So, it has Civic Association support. I personally think this is a wonderful opportunity for an excellent school in our city and excited to see it moving into the district.
Great, thank you. Any questions for the sponsor? Councilman Parker?
Setting aside that I'm sure my -- our colleague in the 13th District will be sad to see Cristo Rey leaving the district, as am I, but also wishing the best for them and for their great mission. I couldn't help but note in the letter that was placed here from the Locust Point Civic Association that you just referenced, that it said the bill has been amended to correct the number of dwellings permitted and to only allow a private school on the parcel. Yes, thank you. Would you -- would you walk us through -- I wasn't aware that we could distinguish in the zoning code between public and private educational uses. Can you just explore that with us a little bit? I just want to make sure I understand that their letter matches up with what we're trying to accomplish.
Yeah. So, and specifically, a private high school. So, a private elementary or middle school would not be allowed there, and that has to do -- and, you know, Caroline can come correct me wrong, but it's because it's in a PUD, so there's more flexibility in what can be done and not done than if it was just a regular land use within a zoning code. So, I'm seeing Eric Tiso nodding, so I'm feeling good about what I just said. Yeah, so that's the -- that was where that flexibility comes from. And specifically, the -- I'll just make a note that I think there was -- there's some apprehension from a previous change to the PUD that took place sometime in the 2000s down in that community. So, there's just a lot of concern about it being, incidentally, in the future becoming something besides what they agreed to support. So, they -- the amendment was to make it as tight as possible. The change on the number of housing units is, for the purpose of this, like a technicality of having to address something in the PUD, it's not going to impact what's going on at that portion.
Sure. So, when you use the term amendment and the letter referenced amendment, as I look at the text of the bill in front of us, it's removing in Section 4C, it's removing as prohibited principal uses, elementary, secondary schools, colon, nonprofit or publicly owned, semicolon, elementary, secondary schools, colon, public or private. So, is -- does this represent the amendment you described, or like, is this the final version of the bill?
So, that's the original
Right.
...text of the -- so, sorry. When I'm saying the bill as a whole amends the PUD
Right.
And then there is an amendment to -- right, to amend the bill. So, I'm saying amendment a couple different ways, and that's confusing. But the -- basically, the idea is this amendment that we have before us today is changing that original bill text to tighten the allowable uses to just a private high school.
Yeah, exactly. So, it'll be that second category, elementary, comma, secondary schools, colon, well, whatever. Do we have the text of that amendment is what I'm looking for?
I don't have an amendment in the packet.
So, I'm not in any way critical of the amendment. I just want to make sure I have it in front of me so I know that
No, no.
What I'm voting on is exactly what we're intending here.
No. Yeah, so we don't have the -- it sounds like Mr. Chair is saying we don't have the amendment in the bill packet.
It's not in the packet.
It is or is not?
It's not.
It's not? Maybe we can hold off for Tony to look into that. So, this is -- I know that we worked this through DLR, I think, last week, so
Yeah, sorry. Okay.
My apologies for the oversight.
All right, so we have an amendment. I'm going to ask about this because I -- okay. What is the logic -- what does the amendment do?
So, the amendment does a couple things. One, it changes the number of housing units, which are allowed across the PUD in a way that has no impact on what actually is going to be built there. It was a kind of a mathematical error in the weirdness of PUD stuff, so it's being -- that is also a correction. It's that it is allowing a private high school as a land use on that parcel. The original language just allows for a -- an elementary or secondary public or private high school in that parcel.
Yeah.
This only allows for a private high school. And then, I believe it makes
That's my primary concern.
Yeah.
What is the
That's the main thing that's happening.
What is the point of, like, limiting this to only a private high school?
This is a concern that the community had, and the community was very engaged in the process, and it's because it was -- there is a -- it's not like a future plan, right? Like, they have a buyer who is trying to buy the parcel.
Is that the amendment?
Yeah, yeah. Okay.
So, it's not limiting the land use only to a private high school. It is only adding private high school to the allowable set of land uses. It is currently not an allowable use on that parcel. It would then become an allowable use.
All right, so, page 2, line 19 and on from the bill says, "The following uses are prohibited as principal uses in the planned unit development." So, this is as the planned unit development already reads, and it prohibits electrical and household appliance stores, elementary, secondary schools, nonprofit or publicly-owned elementary, secondary schools, public or private, and then exterminator shops. It's all alphabetical. So, this takes out the prohibition of elementary schools or secondary schools, nonprofit or publicly-owned, and elementary or secondary schools, public or private, and adds in on page 2 after line 24, it puts back in the prohibition of elementary schools, nonprofit, public, or private. So, it puts back in and retains the existing prohibition
Correct.
Of all elementary schools.
Correct.
And then adds in a prohibition on just secondary schools, public, not -- so that private high schools are made de facto allowable.
Correct.
I have to say, this gives me pause. The idea that we would prohibit a public school from going somewhere that we would allow a private school, that doesn't sit right with me. And I'm just seeing this for the first time. Otherwise, I'd have had this conversation privately.
Yeah, would have -- wish I had recognized that this wasn't in the bill packet so we could have had this earlier. I think it's worth -- it is really worth noting here two things. One, the nature of the private high school that is going in there
Mm-hmm.
Is not Gilman, right? Like, it's not McDonnell.
Yeah.
Like, and that is like --
Yeah.
No offense to anybody, but that is a real consideration that the student body at Cristo Rey is primarily black. There's a substantial Hispanic minority. They are -- there's an income cap for families, so above a certain income, you're not allowed to attend. And so, A, while I totally hear the concern about excluding schools, public schools, right, like, this is not that type of situation exactly, and I will also say, B, that having sat in on a substantial number of the community meetings, this whole conversation grew out of, at least in the community meetings, this like very persistent concern amongst community members that we would unintentionally change the PUD in a way that allowed something besides exactly what the Civic Association was voting in support of, which is not how the zoning code works, but is how PUDs work.
Right. I'm going to go to the Vice Chair.
So, my -- thank you, Mr. Chair. My concern is that we just gave -- this is a clear example of why we rely on the Law Department for form illegal sufficiency and especially the legal sufficiency part. And we just gave them the amendment, and I'm sure they're going to need more time to research and make sure that this piece is a good piece to work with. So, I just wanted to make that comment.
I want to proceed with the rest of the hearing.
Sure.
I want to take our agency reports. I want to take our public testimony on this, and then might want to recess it and come back to it before the end of our committee session here, after a little bit of further discussion.
Sure.
Thank you. Any other questions about the bill or the amendments, anything? Okay, great. Sorry, I've got too many things in front of me. Agency reports. Let's go to the Law Department. Law Department?
Desiree Lucky on behalf of the Law Department, as we've just received
As we've just received the amendments, we definitely want to take time to research before we can approve the bill for form and legal sufficiency.
Okay. Thanks. Planning Commission?
Good morning again. This was reviewed by the Planning Commission in their meeting of August 7, and they recommend favorable for the bill and to answer some of Councilman Parker's questions, just in case it wasn't clear. With planned unit developments, as part of the transition rules, when the 2017 conference of rezoning of the city was done, the transition rules basically said that existing planned unit developments are more or less frozen in time. And then, it provided some procedures for minor and major changes to that. The intention at the time was to allow that to stay, and that if there's a major change that was needed, that it would need to be repealed and replaced so that it could be recast in the language of today's zoning code. That was an amendment that was removed. So, there are ways that you can amend PUDs and still keep alive the old language of the prior zoning code. And this is one of those instances. So, it's using those original land uses. So, I think that is something that can be done in this bill. So, that's just a little bit on the technicalities of it. With that, we were aware of the amendment and have no objection to that. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Housing Community Development?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Jason Wright, representing DHCD. We did not get a chance to review this amendment. We did submit a bill report, but we would like to review the amendment in the context of the broader bill, if possible.
Okay. Any questions from the committee for any of our agencies? Okay, there are none. We'll go on to public testimony. Caroline?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Caroline Hecker, Rosenberg Martin Greenberg, on behalf of the applicant. I'm joined by Scott Slosson, who's a representative of the development team. I want to thank Councilman Blanchard for his work on this. I know this has been a complicated process. This is... We haven't done a lot of PUD amendments under the new code. We haven't had to because Transform Baltimore has been so much more modern in terms of zoning codes from what we had before. These don't come up nearly as often as they used to. The purpose of this PUD amendment came out of the desire to find a new location for Cristo Rey Jesuit High School. They are located right now over by Patterson Park. They're looking for a new home. They've outgrown their space. And the property known as the Tier Building in Locust Point, it was part of what used to be the Tide Point Campus and has most recently been the Under Armour Headquarters, was identified as a potential great location for them. They have about 350 students. It's a perfect size. The building is a great opportunity for adaptive reuse, actually. It was an old warehouse, and that warehouse has been sort of repurposed for a parking garage. Under the PUD, it was contemplated to be a 138,000-square-foot office building with about 530 parking spaces. So, you know, when you take the proposed 350 kids at the school compared to 138,000-square-foot office building and 500-plus cars, it's a much less intense use in the neighborhood than what was contemplated there under the PUD. But when we looked at the PUD, we realized that the PUD prohibits schools. It prohibits all schools. It prohibits elementary schools, secondary schools, public schools, private schools. No schools are allowed in the PUD, which is ironic, because the underlying IMU-1 zoning would allow schools. So, you know, we realized we were going to have to amend the PUD. And so, we've now taken the opportunity to sort of clean up a couple of other things as part of this bill, in addition to permitting the schools. And, you know, as Councilman Parker just recently discussed with Councilman Blanchard, it's a little bit confusing, because this is a PUD amendment, and then there are amendments to the amendment that are proposed. So, you know, just sort of following along, it's sort of a lot to digest. And, you know, I don't know where the disconnect occurred, that the amendments weren't submitted to the committee in advance. So, I'm going to try to walk through the whole thing with the committee and try to help make sense of what exactly is proposed. So, in the PUD amendment bill, the bill as introduced, we struck the prohibitions on the two types of schools, or really, maybe four types of schools, elementary and secondary, public and private. And one of the things we heard back from the community was, that's too broad. We want to limit... We want to be careful about what we're approving here. We want to approve Cristo Rey, but we don't want to, like, broadly open the door for something that we haven't considered. So, when we came back to them with some proposed amendments, the proposed amendments to the amendment do a couple of things. They clarify that it's private high schools that are going to be permitted. And the language of the amendment that was prepared by DLR is not... I mean, like, I understand why it's done this way, and it's legally sufficient and correct. It's just they're reacting to a list of prohibited uses and figuring out how to make it... How to make permitted what we're looking for is just sort of awkwardly worded. One of the other amendments to the amendment is the addition of a... Or, the substitution of a new development plan sheet to the PUD that specifies where the school can go, because the community wanted to be sure that we weren't broadly approving a school anywhere in the PUD, but that the school would be located on this Tier Building site. So, that's shown on the development plan to the PUD. And, you know, what's also shown is that there were townhouses proposed on part of that Tier Building site. We're now saying those can be... If it's not going to be those townhouses, it can only be a school or those townhouses. That's it. Moving back to the original bill as proposed, one of the other things that we changed was there was a provision in the original PUD that said, "Part of our Tier Building site, known as Areas A and B, could only be used for residential use." Now, that's part of the school site, so we had to amend that so that A and B can be school or residential. But C and D, which were part of that same section of the PUD, they're still only residential. And that's where the change to the number of units is relevant. And the amendment to the amendment create... Addresses the mathematical arithmetic error in subtracting the number of units that would remain in those parcels, C and D. And then, finally, the last thing was that the old PUD, for reasons that are not entirely clear, prohibited access on the south side of the Tier Building site, vehicular access. And we sort of went back and forth with the community about what exactly that means. And I think what we think what it means is that there was supposed to be townhouses on the south side of the site, and then the office building and the parking garage. And we think that the intent was not to allow cars to drive through the townhouse development to get to the parking garage. So, we've proposed language that would clarify that, and DLR sort of adjusted what we had originally proposed to make it a little bit clearer that we're saying that it's not going to be... Vehicular access is not going to be allowed specifically from Beeson Street and Halbert Street into Areas E and 7, which are the Tier Building site, rather than prohibiting all vehicular access altogether. So, there is, as I said, there is the bill, which is a PUD amendment, and the amendment to the amendment, which makes this even more confusing. As a legal matter, the council is required to make certain findings of fact in approving a PUD amendment. I had prepared written findings of facts, which we presented to the Planning Commission. I'll tell you, under the new zoning code, there are a lot more findings that are required to be made than the old code required. And so, hang on, I think I have another copy of this up here. I'm going to hold on to one of these. These are the drought findings of fact we presented to the Planning Commission. At the Planning Commission, I went through them all, one by one. It's six pages long. It took about half an hour. I can do it here if you'd like me to, but I would otherwise proffer that the committee can review the findings of fact and adopt the proposed findings of fact that we've submitted, if that's acceptable. Otherwise, I'm happy to walk through them. It's just that there's a lot of them. They get repetitive. It will take a little while, and I know that there are a number of other things on the committee's agenda.
Yes. I did intend to have this as the last thing on our agenda, but had to change things up here on the fly, because I knew that this one would take a little longer than others. I would like to come back to this.
Okay.
But I will finish calling here for Scott Slosson. If you want to testify, check the box to testify.
Oh, I don't know.
No?
I don't think you can.
Okay, great.
But I do want to address, just briefly, the issue about the public school versus private school, if that's okay. The intent with the community was that they wanted to limit the PUD amendment to exactly what had been proposed. And in that case, we limited it geographically in the change to the development plan to show only the location in the PUD where the school could be permitted, and to specify the type of school that we were permitting, which is a private high school. The intent isn't necessarily to exclude any other type of school. They just want to make sure that what they're approving here is the private high school. I can tell you, as a practical matter, it's way too small a site for a public school. It only has 350 kids. It's never going to be a public school. So, you know, like, it may be sort of much to do about nothing. As a private school, it works nicely, but it's a small site.
I think the... If the size of the property is... Makes it a moot point, then it's a little less unsightly if we just say it means nothing if we allow it, then.
Right.
So, in any case, I want to come back to this. We're going to recess this hearing.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're going to go through the other bills, and then we're going to take a brief recess from the committee. We'll have a little further discussion about what we do, and then we'll close things out after that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. Council Bill 250083, RPP Area 30, exception, 15 East West Street. Councilman Blanchard?
All right, so, similar to the earlier bill, this is a conditional use conversion. It's...
No, this is...
Yeah, yeah, sorry, sorry. The property in question, 15 East West Street in Federal Hill, this is a... The property owner is working to do a conditional use conversion from one unit to two of residential. And there was, within the last couple of years, in that neighborhood association's boundaries, they struck a deal with a previous property owner seeking to go from one unit to three, where they would require off-street parking, and then they would have... That property would not be allowed to have extra spaces in the RPP. So, this was an agreement struck between, basically, the neighborhood association, went to this property owner, asked for the same thing. Property owner said, "Yep, totally works." And so, that's what this agreement is for.
Cool. And there is an amendment in the packet here. Do you want to explain that amendment?
Hang on, sorry, it's been a couple of months.
This... Oh, I'm sorry. This is from the Parking Authority. I will let them speak to it. My bad.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, sorry, it's been... It was a couple of months ago when this conversation came up.
Sorry, my mistake here. Great. Any questions for the sponsor before we go to the agency reports? Okay, great. Thank you. Law Department?
Thank you, Chair Dorsey. Jeff Hoxteller with the Law Department. The Law Department can approve this bill for forming legal sufficiency and has also reviewed Parkings Amendment and is fine with it.
Great, thank you. Department of Finance?
Good morning, Mr. Chair. Gabriel Stuart Zeigowitz here for the Department of Finance. I'm a legislative liaison. Our report is, we do not oppose, instead of receiving the standard allotment per unit, this bill would limit a total of four residential parking permits and one shared permit... A visitor's permit, reducing the maximum permits that can be issued to this as addressed by four and one visitor permit. This bill is just focusing on one property. There's no capital investment or any other expenditure, and the maximum revenue deferred by this legislation would be about $100 a year.
Great, thank you. Do not oppose, huh? It says, "Do not oppose." Yeah? Your report?
Correct.
Okay, great. Parking Authority, and you'll let us know about your amendment also? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Christmas Age Parking Authority of Baltimore City. So, our report is favorable with amendment.
Can you pull that microphone a little bit closer?
Sure, sorry. Christmas Age Parking Authority, our bill report is favorable with amendment. The amendment is because of a management issue. The one currently in Area 30, RPP Area 30, which this building, this parcel, is within. Every dwelling unit is eligible for four vehicle permits and one visitor permit. And this would reduce that number for each dwelling unit. Each dwelling unit at 15 East West Street would only get two vehicle permits per dwelling unit. So, the total parcel would only get four vehicle permits. And the visitor... The existing bill says the visitor pass, one visitor pass, would be shared between the two dwelling units. And Parking Authority believes that that would be a managerial difficulty for the Parking Authority to determine which dwelling unit gets the vehicle... The visitor permit. If that permit were lost, the visitor permit were lost, either dwelling unit couldn't get a new one until the renewal period. It would... I mean, it might put us in a difficult position of having to deal with that situation. So, our amendment is to change page two, lines 10 to 11, to read, "Each of the two dwelling units may be issued one visitor permit." So, each dwelling unit would be eligible for one visitor permit.
Great, thank you. Department of Planning?
Planning, recommend favorable. This is an operational concern, so we defer to Parking Authority.
Great, thank you. Any questions for any of the agencies on their reports? Go ahead, Councilman Gray.
This is for Parking. Could you just go through just some of the headaches that would probably come about trying to facilitate who's going to get the parking permit? Like, how would you guys be able to intervene if this were to pass?
That's a good question, Councilmember. I believe we're not in this situation currently where we have to determine which dwelling unit would be issued the visitor permit. This would be the first time we would be asked to determine between, on one parcel, there's two dwelling units. We'd have to decide which dwelling unit gets the visitor permit each year. I mean, or, you know, we would be put in that position. So, it's not clear how that would work out, and if there would be a difficulty, if there was one choice made and the other party said we weren't involved, or, you know, we weren't able to state our case, it just seems it's a managerial issue.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, as was explained to me, basically, like, Parking Authority would either be in this position of deciding, "Unit one can get the parking pass," or "Unit two." But, sorry, we can't issue... And like, how would they decide which one? And then also, or if they were just like, "We're going to issue one parking pass to the building, and Units one and two can fight amongst themselves, who gets to wield it for their guest on any given day, and what happens on a day when both have guests?" They just have an impractical thing there, and so, this fixes that practical condition. Anything else for the agencies? Okay, great. And is there... Do we have any public testimony on this bill? We have nobody here for public testimony on this bill. And so, is there a motion to adopt the amendment from the Parking Authority?
So moved.
Great. All in favor of approving the amendment from Parking Authority, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Abstain? Great. The committee will recommend that this amendment be approved. Is there a motion to recommend the bill favorable with the amendment?
So moved.
Great. The bill is moved to be favorable with the amendment. Julianne, let's call roll.
Dorsey?
Yes.
Milton? Yes. Parker? Wright? Bullock?
Yes.
The bill will be recommended favorable with amendment at the next city council meeting on Monday. Okay. We will go to Councilman Bullock's bills now. Thank you, Councilman Blanchard. We will call up Bill Number 250072, zoning, conditional use conversion of single-family dwelling units to two dwelling units each in the R8 zoning district, 1703 and 1709 Edmondson Avenue. Sponsored, Councilman Bullock. Give us a few words about the bill. Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and colleagues. Pretty straightforward bill. As you know, I do several of these almost every council meeting. But again, these are... These are pretty straightforward residential conversions on Edmondson Avenue. Again, it has community support and has been heard by the Planning Committee. So, again, the Planning Commission, I should say. So, I appreciate any questions and look forward to a favorable disposition.
Great, thank you. This is straightforward conditional use. There are no variances or anything required. Any questions for the sponsor? There are none. We will go to agency reports. Law Department?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Michelle Toth, on behalf of the City Solicitor's Office, and we approve the bill for form and legal sufficiency.
Great, thank you. Where is my thing? Why is this... Oh. Where is my thing? Why is this, oh, sorry. Planning Commission?
The Planning Commission reviewed this bill in their meeting of June 26th and recommended favorable. And just note that the parking variance that was initially included is no longer required since the base zoning code removed that requirement, so you can proceed with just the conditional use.
Great, thank you. And the Housing Community Development?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Jason Wright, representing DHCD. We stand behind our favorable bill report.
Great. Any questions for any of our agencies? None. We have no amendments for this bill. We will, is there any public testimony for this bill? There is nobody here to give public testimony on this bill. Is there a motion to approve the bill favorable?
So moved.
The bill has been moved favorable. We'll take a roll call vote.
Dorsey?
Yes.
Middleton?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Bola?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
The bill is voted favorable and will be recommended as such to the full city council at its next meeting on Monday. Next Bullock bill here, we have zoning, Bill Number 250092, zoning, conditional use conversion to a banquet hall in the C2 zoning district, variance 1123 West Baltimore Street. Councilman, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and colleagues. This one is a little bit different than my usual bills, but it's one that has a lot of community support. The applicant and his wife, they both, as a team, reached out to our office. They are looking to have a banquet hall and a space that's really being underutilized, but is also on the rise in our community and providing some great options for folks to have events within the community. So again, would appreciate your support and favorable disposition. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Can you help us put something on the record about the variance here?
Sure.
Just something, anything. We have a variance for the parking here. We will, I'll ask, I'll ask Planning Commission.
I'll just say, there's plenty of on-street parking, but I'll let Planning...
Yeah, I'll, we'll, we'll hold off on that. We do want to put something on the record as finding of facts for that. The, no questions for the sponsor? Great. We will go to our agency reports. We will start with the Law Department.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Michelle Toth, on behalf of the Law Department, we approve for form and legal sufficiency. And actually, I was going, going to say, there is a variance requested for parking, but the, apparently, the planning commissioner granted an exemption from off-street parking requirements due to the age of the building, the fact that no parking had previously been offered, and the fact that the building takes up the whole lot, so there is no room for off-street parking. So I was going to say that the council should find facts that this exemption has in fact been granted.
Administratively?
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you. Planning Commission?
This bill was reviewed by the Planning Commission in their meeting of September 18th, and yes, this is one of those instances where in the zoning code 16601F, there's a provision for structures that are 50 years old. So if you're a structure 50 years old or for structures that have received a historic tax credit, they can be exempted from the parking requirements subject to review and approval by the Director of Planning. Historically, the director has not wanted to wade into that where there are other hearing matters at play, but seeing the trajectory of where we're going, and this building was built in 1915, has never provided parking. Just looking at the conditions of the surrounding area, immediately behind it is a paved parking lot that appeared, looking at historic aerials, somewhere between 1971 and 1981. The buildings that were there disappeared, and the parking lot has been in operation serving this commercial corridor since. Given lack of any objection, it was determined to be acceptable to exempt the parking requirement, and so there is no variance needed here.
Great, thank you. Department of Housing and Community Development?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Jason Wright, representing DHCD. We respectfully stand behind our favorable bill report.
Great, thank you. Any questions for any of these agencies?
General question.
Madam Vice Chair.
Is the name of the hall Little Miss Butterfly?
That is the name of her event planning company. I'm not sure if that's going to be the actual name of the event space, but that is the name they've been doing business under.
Just unique name.
It is, and they do some great work, apparently, so.
Yes.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. And is there anybody here to give public testimony on this bill? I don't think so. Okay, great. There is nobody here to give public testimony on this bill. Yes, Councilman Parker?
Thank you. I really appreciate this project coming for us. Do we have some sense, I looked through the different reports from planning elsewhere, do we have some sense of what the capacity at build-out, what we expect the fire rated capacity of the banquet hall space will be?
We don't have that no, and this is always one of the tricks, because the fire capacity is one of the last things that is determined before, I believe, UNO, I'm not sure if our fire officers are still here, I think they had to go. So that's, that's always left at the last minute, so trying to determine what the parking requirement may have been anyway is anyone's guess, but it's a bit of a moot point.
And I, I do know this is a C2 facility, and so another bill before the committee would be doing away with the parking minimums in any event, should that, should that move forward in a C2 situation. But it always is an interesting question, the banquet hall, we have a number of banquet halls, I think, in all of our districts, and, you know, by their nature, they do draw a lot of people for a specific period of time, so not in any way objecting to the variance request, which has already been granted by planning, but just always curious, like, you know, how many, also, you know, if I'm planning an event, how many people can I have there, right? So in your conversations with the building owners, do you have any sense of, of what they're, how large an event they're hoping to have?
Yeah, I get this answer. You could probably see somewhere between 50 and 100 folks. And I would also say that the, that the property is owned by a very responsible business owner on that corridor, and so they've had lots of conversations with folks in the community. As you know, in many neighborhoods, there are concerns around raucous parties and events, but fortunately, they have a good working relationship with the neighboring community, so that should be good. But my understanding is about 50 to 100.
Yes, I really appreciate it, Councilman Bullock. It's a really handsome property. I think that everything looks great. Thank you for bringing it to us.
As we can all hear, Councilman Parker is already planning his next event.
There you go.
On the west side. Cool. We have no public testimony for this. I heard that we should find facts, so I'd like to say there's a finding of facts that the variance requested has been approved administratively in advance of this by the house, by the planning director. So I make a motion that we find this as fact. Is there a second?
Second.
Great. All in favor of adopting this as finding of fact, say aye? Aye. All opposed, say nay? Abstain? None? Great. The finding of fact are adopted by the committee and will be recommended to the council with the bill. If we voted favorable right now, Councilman Bullock, would you like to move this bill favorable?
Yes, I would like to move this bill favorable.
Great. Julianne, call the roll, please.
Dorsey?
Yes.
Middleton?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Bola?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Great. The bill will be recommended favorable to the full council at its next meeting on Monday. We're finished with Bullock's bills. Great. We are going to do three bills from the administration here. I got three. I got 20, I got 84, 85, and 86. We'll start with 84. 2580, 250084, city streets closing, a six-foot portion of West Saratoga Street and an alley 10.67 feet wide, bounded by Pearl Street, West Saratoga Street, and North Green Street. The administration like to represent the bill?
Yes. Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the committee. My name is Tyler Chanel. I'm Deputy Director of Government Relations for Mayor Scott. This bill is pretty straightforward. As you said, it closes the street. The University of Maryland, Baltimore owns the abutting properties and intends to consolidate this block. Their near-term plans point to the development of some planned fields with potential for larger-scale redevelopment in the long term.
Great, thank you. Any questions for the administration? Great. We will hear from our agency reports. Department of Finance?
Good, good morning, Mr. Chair. Gabriel Stuart Zeikowitz here for the Department of Finance. The Department of Finance does not oppose this legislation. We do not anticipate a significant financial impact.
Great, thank you. Department of Transportation?
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the committee. Christian McNeil, representing DOT. We stand by our favorable bill report.
Thank you. Planning Commission will review this in the commission on October 9th, but I will note here that this bill was introduced on July 21st, and so the required 60 days for Planning Commission to hold its hearing has passed already, so we are within our right, as a, within our scope here, to be able to move this bill without a Planning Commission report. And I don't think there's any concern about this. Is there a Planning Commission, Planning Department recommendation to the Planning Commission?
Not for this bill. For the companion bill, interestingly, it was referred to both the Planning Department and Commission. I think that was just administrative oversight, so we can discuss that in the next bill if you would prefer. We don't have any concerns as a department. There's a small alley that is between former lots that will be removed, and the six-foot strip of West Saratoga Street, as it sits today, is already appearing as if it were part of the property. It's within the curb line, it's already fenced off. So this will basically allow them to square off because the two property boundaries are not parallel. So I don't think that anyone would even know that this action happened once it's approved, but it will allow the consolidation of the parcels. So as a department, we have no concerns.
Great. Does the administration have something to add?
No, that was for 85, right?
These two bills are the same.
Oh, got it, okay.
One is the street closing, and the other is the sale of property. Same parcel. Okay, any questions for the agencies? Is there any public testimony on this bill? Okay. Seeing as how we are past the Planning Commission's 60-day period, and that there doesn't seem to be any objection to this, I will move this bill favorable. Is there a second?
Second.
Great. It's moved and seconded. Julianne, let's call the roll on this. Yes.
Middleton?
Middleton.
Parker?
84. Hang on a second.
Middleton?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Bola?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Great. The bill is voted favorable and will be recommended as such to the full city council on its next meeting on Monday. Bill 250085, sale of property, section of West Saratoga Street, bounded by Pearl Street, West Saratoga Street, and North Green Street. This is the same property we just discussed in the previous bill, and this is approving the sale of that bill. Anything from the administration?
No, Mr. Chair, it's just a routine sale of property bill. A lot of those properties are owned by the state.
Great. For good measure, any questions for the administration? None? Okay, we will do the agency reports. Again, Finance?
Good morning, Mr. Chair. Gabriel Stuart Zeikowitz for the Department of Finance. The Department of Finance supports this bill. We anticipate minimal fiscal impact. Any funds from the sale would be deposited into the surplus property fund. This fund is used to maintain surplus city property and can be used to cover real estate transaction-related expenses. The sale is also expected to facilitate potential development in the area as well, and over the long term will help promote job growth and increase tax revenue for the city.
Great, thank you. Planning Commission, Planning Department?
Planning Department has no objection to this. Planning Commission will take it up if required at its next meeting on October 9th.
Okay, thank you. Department of Real Estate? We did not receive a report. Any questions for any of our agencies here? Any public testimony on this bill? Okay. I will move the bill favorable. Is there a second?
Second.
Julianne, let's call the roll.
Dorsey?
Yes.
Middleton?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Bola?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Great. The bill will be recommended favorable to the full council at its next meeting on Monday. Bill 250086, city streets closed, closing a portion of North Chapel Street. This is another bill from the Department of Transportation. Administration bill?
It's an admin bill?
Yeah, I'll take it. Tyler Chanel, Mayor's Office. Thanks, Mr. Chair. This is another pretty straightforward one. Again, Johns Hopkins has requested the disclosure in order to consolidate the adjacent properties as part of their ongoing redevelopment work in East Baltimore.
Okay. Any questions for the administration on this? Okay, we'll do bill reports. We'll hear from Department of Finance.
Good afternoon. Sorry, getting ahead of myself. Good morning, Gabriel Stuart Zeikowitz for the Department of Finance. The Department of Finance does not oppose this legislation, and we do not anticipate a fiscal impact.
Great, thank you. Transportation?
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the committee. Christian McNeil, Department of Transportation. We stand by our favorable bill report.
Great, thank you. Planning Commission?
The Planning Commission previously made a finding that there's no further public need for this road bed, and I believe it was August of 2023, and so they reviewed this bill in their consent agenda of September 18th and recommend approval.
Great, thank you. Any questions for any of these agencies from the committee? Just a question, should we expect there to also be a sale of property bill? Hopkins is going to buy this property? We're going, we're closing it. Okay, great. Do we have any public testimony on this? We don't know, but, I'm going to, Caroline Hecker, yes?
I didn't sign in to testify, but Caroline Hecker Rosenberg Martin, on behalf of Johns Hopkins, I can answer your question. When we ran title to the bed of Chapel Street, we discovered that Johns Hopkins owns it, actually. They own the two properties on either side of it, and they, their title carries forward to the center line of the street. So there's no need for a sales ordinance.
They already own it.
They already own it.
But, okay, got it. Any questions? Great. Is there a motion to approve the bill? To recommend the bill favorable? Great. It's been moved, and we will take a roll call.
Dorsey?
Yes.
Middleton?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Gray? Bola?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Great. We have gone through all the items on our agenda. I would like to take a five-minute recess here, have a little conversation with Councilman Blanchard and Caroline, and come back here in five minutes. Okay, we're back. We're back, just so that I can say we're out. We're going to recess on Council Bill 250082, which we heard earlier in our session here today. After conferring with the Law Department, we want to give them time to review the amendments. And I will note that we have other bills that I am going to be announcing hearings for, for October 30th, and some of which we still need to give that ample time for agency reports to come in and such. But the applicant for 250082 has a timeline, they, this needs to get done, and they have made a request that we have a voting session on this prior to the council's October 21st council meeting. And so I'm going to try, just so everybody here is aware, I'm going to try to fit in a voting session for this bill before that council meeting, so that I can report it out on the 21st. And we're going to get everything about this settled before then. The 20th? Okay. I guess it's the 20th. In any, in any case, yes, we're going to, I want to just make sure everybody's aware that despite other bills that are going to come after that, I do want to fit this into an agenda, so I'll probably be calling a committee hearing for the Thursday before that. Okay? We're in, committee's finished its business today. We're in recess. Thanks.